Hi everyone, my name is Mohammed Sibki. I'm the AIA Sumatra County Chapter President. And I want to welcome you all to our August AREE 5-point study session. Today, we are very excited to have Tisha Mora with us, as she will be discussing structural concepts. Before we start, I'd like to make a few announcements. First, we want to say thank you to our sponsors, our AREE series sponsor, Heather Young Architects, our Gold Chapter sponsors, Roman Engineer and Amen Builders, and our Silver Chapter sponsors, Da Vinci Marble and BKG Structural Engineers. Session rules, please mute yourself to reduce background noise. Feel free to unmute and ask questions at any time. Again, this is really for your benefit, and it's a live session, so you want to make sure you, if something you are not getting, just stop us and ask a question. Also, feel free to add your question in the chat box below. Do not discuss any specific exam questions. That's not permitted by ANCR, and not that this session is being recorded, and we will add that to our YouTube channel. Now, a little bit about our presenter, Tisha Mora, PE. So, Tisha is an award-winning licensed engineer with DPR Construction. Her background includes building enclosures and structural engineering, and she specializes in façades and prefabricated structures for higher education and healthcare markets. She recently moved from Phoenix, where she served in leadership roles with the Structural Engineering Association, woman in healthcare, and was involved within various other organizations. She's excited to be in Newport Beach and now way to be involved with the community here, locally and California, as a whole. During the weekend, she loves to host dinner parties and try new restaurants with her husband. Other than eating, she enjoys going hiking with her dog and spending time with her friends and family. With that, I will stop sharing my screen. And Tisha, you want to start sharing yours?
Oh my gosh, thank you for that introduction. That was amazing. And another thank you to Mohammed and you for putting this together, and to everybody who's here for taking the time out of your day and giving me the honor of teaching a subject that I love very much, structural engineering, to you all. And, you know, even after this presentation, or over, if we need to do multiple presentations, then we'll definitely coordinate. But if you still need help with any topics, please reach out to me on LinkedIn, and I'd be happy to either set up something virtual, or if you're here locally in Newport, then I'm happy to set up something in person, too. Alright, so we're going to go over a couple requested topics. And I know that there's some folks here from Phoenix, so everyone who's been to the Phoenix study session. So, some things that are going to be new is design loads and load paths that we're going to be going over. Some of the vertical loads, shared moment diagrams, trusses. This is going to be the same example that we went through before. So, and I have a feeling that we're probably only going to have enough time going through these topics here. And then we'll schedule another one for section properties, foundation concepts, and the different material-specific designs. So I will give everybody a heads-up once we start with trusses. Before we dive in, a couple things that I am assuming that everybody here has knowledge of already is pretty good understanding of geometry, units and unit conversion, vectors and force components.
So, Tisha, I do have the poll. You want me to launch the poll for, to see if people have knowledge or not?
Sure, yeah.
So, you all should be seeing a poll in front of you. Again, as Tisha was mentioning, your knowledge in geometry, unit and unit conversion, vectors and force components. Do you think you have enough knowledge that's covered, or do you think you need a refresher? We have 75% voted, we will give another five seconds. And I will end polling now. So, it looked like 59% say yes, they do have knowledge, and 41% say they need a refresher.
Okay, looks like there's definitely a pretty good number, so we'll coordinate a refresher course.
Yeah, so it's around 25 to 30 people need a refresher. So I think it's, yeah, makes sense to have a refresher course.
Alright, so vertical loads. Well, actually, before going in, or going back real quick. So with design loads and load path, there's, when it comes to structural engineering, there's several different types of loads that we have to deal with, but they can basically be broken down into two. One is vertical, and the other being lateral. So, in the chat box, I want to ask you guys, what are a couple of vertical loads that you guys already know that exists? Sorry, one moment, guys. For some reason, I can't find my chat box. So let me open that up real quick, and then, once I have that, I'll be good to go. Oh my gosh, I can't see this chat box. So Mohammed, if you could help me with sharing what people's responses are, that would be great.
We cannot even see our video, by the way. For some reason, it's went away. Okay, yes, now we're seeing it. So the chat box is the one, like in the middle center, near shared screen, there's a chat box. So I have tiles saying "life load" and "dead loads", Elizabeth "dead load", "life load", George "Flores" "wind/snow loads", and then we have "dead", "life load", "snow load".
Nice. Yep, you guys are right. So, what's interesting is about all those responses is like, "dead" is definitely a vertical load, "rain" definitely a vertical load, "snow", "live loads" for sure. "Wind" is one of those special loads that not only does it occur vertically, but it also occurs horizontally. And we'll get more into that here in a minute. And so, when it comes to putting dead load together, a lot of times with structural engineers, they'll analyze the architectural drawings and kind of see what is part of the entire assembly. So let's say if we have a roof, and this box here represents our, whether it's a truss or a beam, whatever's being used as your roof member. Well, there's going to be a couple things that are going to be dead load. One is going to be your sheeting. Alright, so one's going to be your sheeting, and, you know, I think there's like roof paper and tiles or things like that. And oftentimes, or not oftentimes, but most of the time when you add up your roof load, it usually ranges somewhere between like 20 to like 30 PSF. Same thing with wall loads. There's going to be your studs, then it's going to be your jip board, and then after that is going to be your different membrane finishes, and then the finish itself. And all of those pieces are calculated, and that's how your dead load is put together. Another one of those, another load that you guys have mentioned is live load. And what are some live load examples? If you guys could type a couple of those in the chat.
People, Elizabeth is saying people, occupants, people, snow, furniture,
So depending on the structure, yep, things that are...
Not permanent.
I just found my little chat thing, so.
Oh, okay.
Yay. Things that are not permanent in building furnishings, yep. So, you know, for when there's office facilities, it's your partitions, things like that. But then, there's also like other types of buildings, for instance, like parking garages. You're going to have your cars. And with cars, sometimes there's impact loads. Let's see. You know, things that were for libraries, it's oftentimes like bookcases, things like that. And generally, like a bowling alley, there's going to be like the bowling balls. Those are all loads that kind of add up. So funny story with parking garages is, I think it was one of my last years in school, I want to say it's like 2012, I was taking a structures course, and my professor was a structural engineer for one of the parking garages. And ISU, obviously you've been known as a party school, enjoys having parties. There was one particular parking garage, and if you want to look it up on Google, it's called the Mormon Parking Structure. And I think they had their Halloween party or something. And the popular song at that time was "Gone Nonstop". And something that is an issue structurally is parking garages, they are indeed designed for heavyweights, which is cars, but that weight is obviously distributed, doesn't move very frequently. But all of a sudden, this use of this building went from being a parking garage to now a dance floor. And now there's folks between 100 to 200 pounds congregated in one area, jumping up and down, causing these concrete curters to basically bounce and flex and deflect, which ended up resulting in some cracking and things like that. So moral of the story is, try to use the building for what it's intended to be used for, or let your structural engineer know if it's going to be used for other things, and then it could be designed accordingly. So then, another thing about live load, well, actually, I'll come back to this. But once you have all of your different loads identified, so you know what your dead load is, you know what your live load is, and things like that, to design your beams and walls and things like that, often to structural engineers use load combinations. And there's two sets of load combinations. One is your ASD design, and the other being your LRTD. And ASD is designed for demand, so it's your working conditions. What, it's also kind of based on like probability, where it's like the likelihood of what's going to occur. And then meanwhile, strength design is more based on like capacity or the, how much or what that member can resist. I think during your exams, you're more likely to see loads given in the ASD format than the LRTD format. And oftentimes, it's going to be a lot more simplified than this. It'll be like, it'll be just dead, or dead plus five, or dead plus 0.6 wind. And when you're putting in your live load, live load is a little interesting, where depending on your tributary area or tributary width, your live load could be reduced. So, when you're... I think among the example problems, we'll dive a little bit deeper in this, but this is one of the formulas for it. I'm not sure if you need to memorize this or not for the exam. Most likely, it'll be given to you. But make sure you're familiar with how to do, or with the math for this formula, and then you should be good to go. Alright, so the nice thing about the exam, and I guess like another story to share, is that they're going to be pretty straightforward of like how your building is going to be used. But in the real world, when a structural engineer is designing a building, oftentimes it is based on engineering judgment or to their discretion, where, let's say if you're designing a dance club in Germany, and, you know, there's, it's multiple stories. There might be a different DJ on every single floor, and then there might be a rooftop DJ. At which point, even though, like let's say this equation, or one of these equations, where... So there's, so for equation 16-9, it's dead plus regular life, which is for your floor live load. But then there's also equation 16-10, which is dead plus your live load of your roof. And those are analyzed separately. Whereas for equation 16-11, there is dead plus 0.75 life plus 0.75 of your roof live load. But if it's going to be a pretty packed club, most likely you don't want to reduce this. So going back to calculating or under the concept of tributary area and tributary width. So, I think the basics of structural engineering is like, you're going to take this building that your architect gives you, well, you guys are architects, but, oh, there's a question. What was H? What is H and F again? Good question. I want to say F is for blood, and... Let me look up H real quick, and I will find out. I don't know if I'll be able to find out very quickly, but if I can't, I will find out in this one later. Okay. So, I'll have to get back to you on H, sorry about that. Alright, so for tributary area and width. So, I know that like when you have a building, often you guys are looking at it very holistically. And when a structural engineer receives those drawings, what they try to do is simplify it as much as possible to be able to come up with definitions on how these loads are being applied. So, for instance, say this is your floor. I'm going to try to draw this in a little bit, not very clearly. So if you have, so if you have your floor, and say you have your beam right below here. So, I'm just going to use a straight line to represent it. And so it'll be on either side of the building. Then, we're going to assume that this, and we're also assuming that this is spanning in this direction. And let's see if there's another beam here. Then, for this overall span, half of that load is going to go into this beam here. The other half is going to go into your other. So it's pretty much what it is carrying. And I have two examples on this. And they were taken directly out of your guys' handbook. So, for instance, this one. An architect is sizing a gluing ridge beam for a Woodfield residential project. If the design snow load is 60 PSF, what is the total snow load per linear foot of the ridge beam? So if this is your ridge beam, then, and you have your snow load. I guess if someone wants to chime in, what is your tributary width? Thinking of you.
I'd say tributary is between your wall and your beam. There's two tributaries there, is the way I see it. So there's one between this left wall and the beam, and there's one between the right wall and the beam.
That's correct. It's pretty much on this distance to this distance here. Because of the way snow is, is this distance going to be your, this raptor action? Or is it going to be your sloped dimension?
Sloped, the actual surface area that the snow is resting on.
So then, if someone wants to do the math, what is that total trip width?
Are you calculating the overhang? Isn't that usually, the overhang isn't usually calculated, is it?
No. So what you had said earlier is correct. It's going to be the half the distance from your stud to your ridge beam, because these are the two supporting components. So it's going to be from this point to here, and this point to here. So it does not include the overhang.
Tisha?
Yep.
Isn't that overhang in a sense same as a cantilever, though?
Um... So it is a cantilever, but when you're looking at what is occurring at your ridge beam, so please simplify this to being a beam. You have a support that is here, and you have a support that's here. Anything that cantilevers on this side? So let's say, so let's see if this question was asking, like what is the total tread that is occurring at the stud wall here? Then it would be half of this length from the ridge beam to the stud, so whatever this middle span is of the raptor length, plus your total overhang length.
Correct.
Because this is not sitting on anything. But this question is asking, what is the load that is occurring on the ridge beam, which is in the center?
Got you.
So because there's a support here and here, then it would only be half of this load and half of that load.
Did anyone find out the answer? Or do anyone want to give an answer there?
Oh, I guess, I'm not sure we have all the information, because we don't know what, do we know what the slope of that roof is?
I think you do have all the information.
10 feet.
Because wouldn't we need to know that?
It's 4 and 12.
4 and 12.
Yeah, so I think that's, that's like 28.28 increase in it in the length. It's like 10.126, something like that. So it's over 10 feet, but I don't think it's... Yeah, that's somewhere around there. I can't, I'm guessing, I'm trying to remember my percentages of slope.
Is how would we calculate that actual surface then, knowing it's 4 and 12? So 4 divided with, where's my calculator? That's 0.33.
Okay, it's point, yeah, 0.33, that's right. It's been a while.
You actually don't need the 0.33.
Is this just a simple 10 feet times 60? We'll have 600 pound per square foot.
Yeah, that's usually the way they figure it, is not the, on the slope angle.
So you don't account for the slope? You just basically take it as if it's...
Yeah, it's straightforward. 10 feet times the actual interior's load, which is 60 pounds per square foot.
Okay.
So, yep, so, so basically, when it comes to snow load, because it's dead, and it's not like when that load is acting directly down. So you actually don't need this like overall length. They give you the raptor span, which is right here, 10 feet. So, the answer is going to be your tripling... Trip length, which is here, which is 5 feet, plus 5 foot on the side, so you have a total of 10 feet, times your 60 PSF, which is the design load that's provided. So then, your units work out such that 60 PSF times 10 feet Alright, so another example problem, but it's, I think, also out of the AREE, if I can. So for this, they go into your roof. Do we want to walk through this question? Or is everybody good with the concept of trip and trip width? Or we can definitely do, also do this question.
We had this in our study group, and that's what we're trying to, like, we were sort of, we realized that the tributary, but like, how does that apply to a column? You know, and then there was another picture, I think. Maybe it was separate, but, at any rate, it's like not on a wall, it's on a column. We're assuming there's a beam, or it's distributed load. I'm not sure. It's like, it's almost like it doesn't, it's not all there.
So, for this specific question, so they already specify that it's an interior column. And they already give you the tributary area. So they say the tributary area is equal to 20 foot by 24 feet. So you actually don't have to calculate the trip area in this sense. But say if the question happened to give you a roof, those three columns, and they just told you that in and out of the page, like these columns are spaced at 10 foot on center. I'm just going to say 10 foot on center in plane. And then we'll just say that these columns are spaced apart from each other 10 feet. So, every time I fill up here, the little zoom options keep popping up. So if this is your column, um, based, and if it's asking for the trip area that occurs just at that column, then you're gonna take half of what's occurring on either side of the column that is in plane. And you're also going to take the half of either side here. So we have this half, this half, and then five foot um, towards you and then five foot on the other side. So then that gives you, this will be ten feet going in and out of the page is also ten feet. So then your total trip area, so I'm just gonna call it T dot V dot close, ten foot times ten foot. Which is a hundred square feet. And that will be your trip that occurs right at this column.
So I assume it's twelve feet by twelve feet on the front and back.
And then?
Twenty-four.
I see ten foot, ten foot, uh, front and back there.
Oh, because it's twenty by twenty-four, then if this is the ten by ten to be?
No, she's using this for a separate example. She's just, she's just creating the example. She's not.
Oh, she's not calculating?
No, no.
Esha?
Yes, sir?
Uh, we could also then assume that, uh, the, uh, the tributary area at the end uh, of each of those left and right would be half of that. Because uh, there's certainly tributary area on one side of each of those posts.
Correct.
So it'd be?
So like if I took a plan view?
It'd be fifty pounds per square foot.
So if I took a, yeah, a, a plan view, and if we were trying to calculate for a column that was an exterior column, then so then it would be what you're saying, Ron, which is half of this, but then half on either side. So this would be your trip area for this column here.
So if, just for an example, I meant, let's say these two, the three outer columns on each side, either direction, that they were moved out like another two feet. So it's not symmetrical. It would be more rectangular. So the, so our tributary areas get more just a little less straightforward.
So if we move this two feet, two feet this way?
Mm-hmm, yeah, something like that.
So then, um, it would be half of whatever the distance is between your center column to this column. So this half. Plus your two feet. Because this is being cantilevered. So there isn't a support here, right?
Correct.
And then, because this is occurring right at the edge, it'll be the half of the distance between this column, this column. So then your trip area for column occurs right here is gonna be this. Did that make sense, Matt?
Yep.
Yeah. And so that's why we, there was another problem we were working through that was in our last study session that was similar to that where the columns were spaced out, you know, lengthwise, like fourteen, fifteen feet apart. And the other way, the columns were maybe eighteen or twenty feet apart. And so their graphical representation showed it like it was square. They drew a box, like a square box around one of the columns, saying, what's the tributary load? And it's confusing because you think it's gonna be some kind of symmetrical thing you're missing. But the dimensions, you have to just calculate what the dimensions are. And they're irregular and come up with half of that. And then figure out the tributary. And it's not gonna look like the way they drew this hatched area. You know, it's, it's always, that's why I was saying on exams, it's kinda deceiving because they give you this irregular spacing, but yet they draw, they depict it as it's this square hatched area, but it's not actually square. And so it throws you off.
It's because the concept is what they're asking us to do and read the question, not the graphics.
Right, right. But it just throws you off because they depict it as it's this, some, you know, symmetrical load and it's not, you know.
Alright. I'm gonna move all this over. So going back to this question. So let's see if they had asked to use a load combination. So instead of what they're showing here, which load combination would govern the design? And we're gonna use ASD load. Using the values that are given. And as you guys are solving that, I'm gonna do it to my mind.
Is this a question that would be asked on the exam?
Um, I think it would. Uh-huh, I would be.
I took the ARI test one, you know, that they have on there just before I took one of my exams and it, it had a similar one to this. It's kinda like their practice one, like actually goes over PA and PPD and everything. Like you're taking that like this massive everything test, but I remember one being like this, that's just on, you know, NCARPS practice test you can take. And it does look like this, combinations.
Okay, thanks.
And with each of these like ARI questions, um, that they have in the handbook, I'm just gonna come up with different variations of it. So that way there's, it's not necessarily like the whole concept, but like parts of each of the concepts. Because it seems like a lot of these questions, they won't ask for like a full analysis, but they'll ask for like a portion of that.
The lives.
Um, in the exam, you usually have one minute per question. So when they ask questions, they time it where it's, it shouldn't take you more than like a couple of minutes max. But whatever you see on the handbook, these are questions that you might see in the exam. They, they just give you examples of what you might see in the exam. But most of it are really straightforward questions. Sometime we complicate the answer, but it's, it's straightforward because they know you don't have more than a couple of minutes per question.
Put it in the box.
Let me know whenever you guys are. Right. Um, so it looks like out of everyone who responded in the chat, Ivana is correct. Um, and so here, so the easiest way to solve for this is one, identifying which equations apply. So we know that the roof has a given roof live load and a roof dead load. You know that the floor has a live load and a dead load. Um, and they give, and it repeats again at the second floor. So um, we know that this combination here applies only because there is dead. We don't have F, so then that just goes away, but we got, so we know that there's dead. For equation sixteen dash nine, there's dead plus live.
Pardon me, what is H and what is F?
Um, so H and F, I think someone had answered it earlier in the chat.
Okay.
It's hydraulic load from soil for H and F is hydraulic loads from fluids.
Because we don't have hydraulic loads from soil or fluids in this question, then we can remove those variables and it's just dead and then dead plus live. Um, for equation sixteen dash ten, you know that we don't have these. But it's going to be your roof live load SRR, snow, and then so then we have dead, dead plus live, dead plus roof live. Um, and then the equation sixteen dash eleven, which is point seven five times O plus point seven five times roof, roof live load. This goes away because these aren't occurring on this building. And then all these equations end up basically being the same as these four equations. So now we know that it's pretty much between the four of these. So our total dead is going to be twenty, or sorry, thirty twenty-five PSF plus forty-five PSF plus forty-five PSF. Which is basically these three here. You know that our live load is only going to be these two sixty PSF. Sixty PSF and then our roof live load is equal to thirty PSF. So now we have each of these different factors, or not factors, each of the values for dead, live and roof life. And we can plug and chug into these formulas. And whichever one gives us the greatest value is what's going to govern the design. So we know that this total is a hundred. So that plus live is gonna be equal to two hundred thirty-five PSF. Um, dead plus roof life, we already know that's not gonna govern because it's a hundred and forty-five PSF. And right now, yeah, this is greater than this. So the only possible one that could beat this out would be dead plus point seven five live plus point seven five roof life. And um, has someone already done the math on this one? I think it's. And of these two, this one is the greatest one. So this is what's gonna, this is what that entire column line is gonna, or what that footing is gonna be designed for. Um, so therefore, equation sixteen dash nine is the governing load combination. Any questions?
I hope they don't ask something like this.
They probably won't give you the formula, like this entire formula. I think that they'll definitely give you like three or four formulas simplified as like dead plus, dead plus live. It won't be like straight out of the code book like this, but um, kind of what Matt said, the, the concept to understand with this is knowing what loads to put into each of these like variables. So for this, knowing that this is only going to be floor live and then for here, it's only going to be roof life.
If the question's being asked, at least we're reviewed today. Hopefully it sticks.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright. So we're approaching six forty-seven. Are you guys able to stay later today and we can start diving into shared moment diagrams?
Yes.
Or we can?
No, we can, I'll cook later.
We will be here all night.
I agree.
Uh, yes, absolutely. I will be, I'll, I will definitely share this video. Um, oh, it looks like Dan's asking for a pool if we should stay later.
Um, I, I don't think I can add the pool while anything's on. I usually add it when it's less, uh, yeah, I need to add it before.
Yeah, where you gotta go, Mohammed. That's what we wanna know.
No, I'm, I'm good. This is for you guys. So I can stay. I'm, I'm in my, I'm in my house. This is actually our virtual background. It's just Esha. We just wanna make sure we are not pushing one head a lot. So yes, we, we kinda say a little bit like that, Esha. That's fine.
Awesome. Um, let's do one example and then, um, maybe in the next one, our, our next study session, we'll, we'll start with another shared moment diagram. Um, we'll do a simple one today. We'll do a simple one today and then a little bit more complicated one next time. Um, also for the next study session, uh, what, do you guys want me to come up with like a set of practice problems right after? And I can send that PDF to Mohammed and then if you guys want additional questions, I can definitely prepare some if that would be beneficial.
Yeah, bring it down.
Okay, awesome.
You mean before the session, Aisha, you sent me the, so, so I can forward it to all before the session or after the session?
After the session. So it's like homework.
Okay, okay.
I, I just, I have a suggestion. You know, if you had like a small project that you did some engineering on it and you have the calculations.
Oh, you don't see that. That's like
You know what I'm saying?
Element analysis, like you want to see like a book of calculations?
Well, no, I, well, I mean, I, I've seen them, but you know, I'm saying that that way it's some, it's nice to correlate, you know, that this is, okay, this is our shear loads and where are we getting, how long is the wall? And here it is, when the calculations, it's all of these loads added up. So, so, so you, you understand, you know what I mean, what each component of the calculations, that kind of thing. Not, not spending a whole, looking at the whole book, but just some one shear wall in it, you know, type of thing.
Be careful what you wish for.
Yeah.
Alright, so Charlie's question, I'm confused with the last problem. The answer for the last problem is to only add up the live load, right?
Oh, I actually can lunch up well. So we'll give ten seconds for you guys to say, yes, staying till seven thirty or no?
Oh, is that saying no means that you can continue or no, it means to stay seven thirty?
Or to stay at seven o'clock?
Oh.
So yes, mean we will stay late. No, it mean we will not stay late.
But I can't change my, uh, my poll. I want to stay longer.
Okay, we'll stay longer. This sounds, it seems like
If you can share later, then whoever that can stay would be great to get it.
Yeah, yeah, I have, uh, the, I'm following. So sixty-five percent saying yes, thirty-five percent saying no. So I think we'll continue until seven thirty and we'll share the, the presentation for those who would need to leave.
Alright, so going to, um, Charlie's question. Um, Charlie, could you, would you be willing to explain a little bit further what you mean by your question?
Uh, yeah, so when I was asking, you know, to find a load on the right side, it was telling us how they calculated. So that was seventy-two thousand pounds. And you know, you got the tributary load that, that makes sense. But then on step two, the way they figured out, they just added the live load thirty plus sixty plus sixty. So on the, um, yeah, step two right there, it was only
Yeah. So for this one, um, and kind of like Mohammed and everyone said earlier, the exam itself, they're going to definitely simplify it. Um, so in this case, they just kind of defined everything as live load and dead load. Um, and so if it's something that's like over, like oversimplified like this, then I would totally take it at face value and come and then determine what your final load is. I would only use the load combinations unless, if it's like specifically asked for.
I guess, you know, that's where our fear is. They'll give us these calculations at the like, you know, the exhibits and you know, if you need to use those calculations, you pull it up. So I, I kind of feel like if they don't give you the, or they don't say, look at the exhibit, you're supposed to know to go there to figure out which calculations you need. And if we though, not everybody remembers off their, the top of their head that you multiply seven point, point seven five times a load and you add another point seven five to a roof load, you know? So I guess, you know, I'm just afraid that some questions might be simplified where you just do step one, two, and three, and some might be, no, you're supposed to know that you're supposed to figure this, you know, the right side out, how you have to add up each load, figure out which one
If I, if I, Charlie, if I can respond to you, Aisha, can you just go to the question itself and just show the question itself, just a question? Um, I think I've kind of mentioned this before, the question, if you can just find right here, just zoom into the question. Um, so if like, always look for keywords and their questions. They, like NCARPS will always specify exactly what they want. Um, you need to study everything, but if you look at this one, first of all, they said refer to the exhibit. It mean you get all your information from the exhibit. Anything not in the exhibit, you, you should not need it to get your answer. They are saying assuming no life load reduction. So they already gave you the keyword, assuming no life load reduction. And then they are asking just for which one of the following is the design life load? So they, they right away took all the, uh, took all the dead load out, right? They gave you the dead load in the, in the exhibit, but they are specifically saying life load for the footings. They don't care about dead load. They don't care about all the calculations. Now you need to learn all the calculations. Aisha is showing because they may ask different questions. They may, they may ask you for the entire lot, but they specifically requested life load. They specifically said assuming no life load reduction. So just make sure you, you, you read the question. They always put these keywords. And sometimes they fill up the question with so many other things that are not needed, but just look for the keyword. They specify twenty by twenty-four, only life load, no life load reduction. Straightforward, you have thirty, sixty, sixty, multiply, divide by, uh, like you will multiply by twenty by twenty-four, you get, this is the area, you multiply by life load, you got your answer. It's, it shouldn't take you more than one minute, but just look for the keywords and you need to, again, you need to understand the whole thing because the, the question might be answered, might be asked differently.
Mohammed, when you say, uh, no live load production, it, does it pertain to, um, the floors between minus the roof?
Um, what you saying?
There will be a reduction?
No, it's saying no life load reduction.
No, I mean, if there is a reduction that to consider and this stipulation was not mentioned, uh, are we assuming that the reduction could be the roof against the force in between?
If, if they did not mention, there is no, like assuming no life load reduction, then you need to do the life load reduction, right?
Oh, I think, um, Aisha is sharing something. Reduction is, okay, here you go. Let me, let me take a screenshot of that. Thank you.
So the reason, I'm so sorry, I totally messed up.
I think I missed that.
Alright, take the screenshot now.
Thank you.
So, um, and the reason why it's specifically saying no wide load reduction here is if you multiply twenty by twenty-four, you get four hundred and eighty square feet. Whereas say if a live load reduction was required, this, um, like code privilege here is saying, um, for members for which the value is four hundred square feet or more are permitted to be designed for a reduced uniformly distributed live load. So because this total area is greater than four hundred feet, then you can actually reduce it for a more efficient design.
Oh, gotcha. Cool, thanks.
But hopefully you do not need to do life or deduction in an exam because that's going to take you more.
Skip it.
Ah, yes, I, I cannot agree more than that, Mohammed.
I mean, they could ask a question of like, hey, here's the air tributary area. But they'll just give you the tributary area and then they'll just ask you, what is the reduced live load?
Yes.
And then at that point
It can be a question by itself, like calculate the life load reduction here. So that's why you really need to study everything, but hopefully in the exam, they don't ask you for all these complications. And they don't usually, they, they try to simplify things. And if, if a question is really too long, uh, I would just mark it and leave it to the end because all the questions are equal when it comes, it's one point per question. So I, I, if the question is too long, just mark it to the end, answer it to the end.
Right, yeah, we're taking an ARI exam, a CE exam.
Yes, yeah, yep.
Alright. So actually, um, you know, we just hit seven. I'm thinking if it's okay, if we could take a break, um, only because it's been a long day today at work. Um, I have a pretty big submitted and stuff. Um, let's schedule another one. I'm like starting to hit a wall. Um, so, but let's schedule another one. Um, I, does, if this time works for everybody and if it works for you, Mohammed, I'm open to doing it next week, Thursday, so.
I I would give like two weeks just so we can, I'd not get everyone on board. Yeah. Um, two weeks with, with us and that Thursday, the twenty-sixth, so August twenty-sixth. Is that, is that good with everyone? August twenty-sixth, same time. So Thursday in two weeks, five thirty to seven PM, same time.
Would be nice if it would be next week so you don't forget the whole concept.
We'll give you the video so you can watch it. And by the time you come in two weeks, you will
Oh, you, you will share the video, this one, the recording?
Yes, yes, yes. We'll share the video. So you can study it even more.
And the notes, we'll also share them.
Thank you, Aisha. It's really great help.
Of course. And also on Saturdays, I, uh, am, I'll probably be at a coffee shop or something studying for my own exams. So if you guys ever, um, and I'm, I'm vaccinated and I also wear a mask. Um, so if you guys ever want to join, um, let me, uh, go ahead and shoot me an email and then as you guys are doing practice problems and stuff, and if you run into questions, I'm always happy to help. So if you're local to Newport Beach, so.
What is your email?
We're all coming.
Awesome.
You, you don't know what you're saying, Aisha. We're gonna, we take it. But we meet on Monday nights, um, for, you know, for our study group in Orange County.
I will try my best to make it to them.
But, but it's on, it's a Zoom meeting, so, um, you know, I don't know if you can do that sometimes or like, you know, at least like once, that'd be great.
Okay, yeah, of course.
Okay, cool.
Or we can just call a friend. You'll be the friend. We can like reach out. We're all arguing. We don't know the answer. Just dial a friend.
Yes.
It would be good to have the option to call a friend during the exam. You can like use it
Yeah.
You only can use it one time.
Cash cab.
Okay, so our next session will be on the twenty-sixth, in two weeks, same time, same day, Thursday, August twenty-sixth.
Will you be sending out a, uh, an email notice?
I'll send that to everyone in this, to everyone here.
No, Ron, it's actually exclusive only for Newport people. Sorry.
It's, it's inclusive.
Why do I miss Newport Beach?
Yeah. Well, uh, thank you all for attending and thank you, Aisha, so much. Thank you for preparing this. Sorry if we keep asking so many questions because everyone still want to learn. So it's, it's, um, I like, I'm, like, I'm really happy that everyone is asking questions and it's, it's, it's a really good discussion. You want to have this discussion now instead of thinking about it in the exam or be like, oh, I haven't seen this before. So it's, this is good. This is great.
Oh, yeah. And the more you guys understand, then even in the real world, it's like the safer our buildings will be. So please ask away.
And the more you can, um, have more discussions with the structural engineer, I'll be like, no, 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 I learned this. I think you can do this forty feet.
You should reduce that live load because I want my ceiling to be, sure.
Sounds good. Okay, uh, yeah. Thank you all for attending. Thank you, thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.